We will now call the special meeting of the Waco City Council on May 27, 2021 to order at 2:00 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. As part of the first phase of the City of Waco reopening process, the City Council is now meeting in person along with limited city staff. We are following CDC guidance and taking appropriate safety precautions. Public participation will remain virtual. In response to COVID-19 pandemic, on March 16, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16, 2020 until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. While providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public attending in person and is being broadcast live at WCCC.tv. Video and audio recordings will be made available to the public. According to the governor and attorney general, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda item. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to speak or submit their written comments on the listed agenda item are asked to register with the city secretary's office by 1:30 PM today. Individuals who registered to speak on an agenda item must limit their comments to three minutes. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. Please now join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
We will now convene the work session with a presentation from Clint Peters, Director of Development Services.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We did want to give you a quick work session on the two public hearing items that we have in our agenda. Am I in control? Yeah, there we go. So the first one is dealing with subdivision plats. We did have three on the agenda. The final plat and construction plans of Hunter's Creek addition and then the final plat and construction plans of the Landris Garden addition, phases two and three. We were anticipating that all three would be ready for council action today, but the Landris Gardens two and three still has some items on their construction plans that need to be worked out and taken back to Plan Commission for action. And so all that's needed for action today by the council is the Hunter's Creek addition plat. And we do have updated packets in there and then an updated resolution as well. So the Hunter's Creek addition plat, this is a new subdivision, proposed subdivision in our ETJ out at Chapel Road and Old Arena. It's about 160 acres with 119 lots, all single-family. This will be on city water, outside our city limits, but it will be on city water. We serve that area and then septic system. So all the lots are acre and above and all standards have been met and Plan Commission recommended by a vote of nine to zero to approve this plat. And then our second public hearing is ordinance change amending the short-term rentals by removing short-term rentals type two and three from our special use sections and zoning districts. And I thought it would be good just to go over one more time what our existing ordinance is and then the proposed changes. So I did want to give a little bit of a description of the five types of short-term rentals that we have currently in our zoning ordinance. The first three are not impacted by the proposed changes. That would be our bed and breakfast in, bed and breakfast, homestay and short-term rental type one. Bed and breakfast in is a resident manager stays on the property while operating the B and B. And these are larger facilities, so no more than 15 guests and then may rent to multiple groups at a time. And so this is your more of your traditional bed and breakfast facility. We do not have any currently of these in our city limits, no special permits applications since 2017, but they are permitted by right in O3 and commercial districts and then by special permit multifamily and then office districts. The bed and breakfast home stays are where the owner stays on the property while operating the bed and breakfast, no more than five guests and may rent to multiple groups. And so these are where the owner is there, more of your traditional style where they're renting out bedrooms to different groups. We do have six of these, five, it's about 5% of our special permit application and then about 2% of all licensed SDRs. That was a question from our last presentation about how many licensed SDRs we have overall. It's 251 of those with about 120 of those with special permit. So I did provide those figures in this presentation. The next category, short-term rental type one, these are owner occupied where the owner stays on the property while operating the STR and they only rent out to one group at a time. So this is usually a situation where they're renting out maybe one or two bedrooms to the same group or maybe renting out a guest home or a garage apartment, but the owner is present when the guests are there. We do see more of these. There's been 24 approved since 2017. These are permitted by right in R2 multifamily residential office and commercial districts, excluding C3 and C5, and then by special permit in single-family residential zoning districts. And the proposed changes do not impact short-term rental type one. They'll still be allowed by special permit in the residential districts. The next category is the short-term rental type two. This is owner does not stay on the property while operating the STR and only rents to one group at a time. Again, it can be a single-family or duplex. So this is usually a private residence, could be a private residence where the owners leave and rent out the whole house, or it just could be an investment property where they're renting out the property. This is the most common STR that we see. We do have, since 2017, we have had 76 approved through the special permit process. They are permitted by right in R2 zoning, multifamily district, office district, and then permitted by special permit, currently permitted by special permit in single-family residential zoning districts. And you can see that represents about 70% of all SDR special permit applications and then 30% of the license, overall licensed SDRs. And then the last category is STR type three. This is the owner does not stay on the property while operating the STR, only rents to one group at a time, and then it's part of a multifamily project. So it's a, could be up three units or more, so it's a multifamily property. We've had 14 approved since 2017, which represents about 10% of the SDR special permits and about 6% of overall license. Currently, they're permitted by right in C2 and C4 districts and then permitted by special permit and then in the multifamily residential and office zoning, which is part of the proposal to take those out of the special use categories. So to give a recap of the proposed ordinance change, we are proposing to remove STR type two from all special permit categories, which is RE, R1A, R1B and R1C districts, and then also remove STR type threes from the all special permit categories, which is the R3A through R3E and then the O2, excuse me, and O3 and C1 districts. SDRs with approved special permits and current licenses continue to operate. There's no impact on those. And then STR type twos and threes permitted by right may continue to obtain license and those will be new ones too. And in an STR type two in R2 zoning, you do have to meet the 500-foot buffer in R2 and then the multifamily residential and office districts don't have that buffer requirements. So we will, under this proposed ordinance change, we will continue to issue new licenses in those zoning districts. And then same thing with the STR type three in the C2 and C4 zoning, C4 is our downtown zoning district and then C2 is our mixed-use commercial. Those would continue to be permitted by right and license issues in those zoning districts. And then, I mentioned earlier, but the STR type ones will continue to be permitted by right in R2 multifamily office and commercial districts and then by special permit in the single-family residential districts and no changes to the type one. And then here's just a map that kind of represents that change and some of the colors are blurred out, but basically what you see there is all the areas in yellow are the single-family zoning. So and then when you see, where you see the permitted and licensed SDRs, those can continue to operate as long as they keep a current license, those can continue to operate, just no new special permit applications in those yellow areas. Those orange areas where you see in North Waco, East Waco and South Waco, that's R2 zoning, so we will continue to accept and approve license applications for those. They don't require a special permit, but they will still need to meet that 500-foot buffer from another licensed facility. And then you can see kind of the, some of the pinks and browns in the downtown area and Bay Area, those are your mixed-use zoning. So the STR twos would still be allowed in those areas and then the STR threes in the downtown and C2s areas. I wanted to show that to you, you know, representative on the map and where those are allowed in the city. And with that, we'll open it up to any questions on the proposed change or comments.
Hey Clint, this is Holmes. I'm looking at the, this page, I guess page 25, and thanks for the presentation, great presentation. I just had a quick question on short-term rental type three for special, you're removing short-term rental type three for special use sections of R3A, R3B, R3C, R3D, R3E, O2, O3 and C1. Remind me again on why we're taking O2, O3 and C1 that aren't residential?
So those are mixed-use districts that are geared more towards residential and then compatible residential where your C2 or C4 are more geared toward commercial uses. So they're, they're what I would call lighter mixed-use districts than what you see with the C2s.
Yeah, I guess my question was on the C1. I just got to go back and look and see what C1 is, but you're saying that's more residential?
Yes, sir. It's designed to be more in the residential areas.
Okay. Just in general, you know, just general observations on this. I'm, I've been a proponent of preserving general zoning standards in residential, residentially zoned neighborhoods, you know, since we started this thing, because I think it's where you, you know, neighborhoods, families, peaceable enjoyment, it's not meant to be commercial property night-to-night renting, hotel motel type activity. And it's people's major investment in their, on their balance sheet usually is their home and for us to be, not cavalier about it, but to entertain the notion of hey, go ahead and cross the street, you can put a hotel there. I don't think it's fair to neighbors. I will say when we started this process four or five years ago, we had, there was, and it's kind of right as the point where tourism was becoming an issue and people just needed a place to stay. We needed the accommodations and a lot of hotel rooms were coming offline. Another executive inn was being torn down, La Quinta was being torn down, the Clarion, a lot of hotel rooms were coming offline. And now the evolution of the last five years, we're seeing a lot of hotels, I guess post-COVID now, have been built in the intervening years and a lot of, more of them are coming online. So from a city perspective, it seems like maybe there was a need and now maybe there will be, from an accommodation perspective and capacity perspective, maybe we can be a little more selective about how we look at SDRs. But I also will say that my position evolves a little bit because I always, initially I was saying anytime it's not owner occupied and in a single-family, I don't, I don't think we should even put one there. But I saw cases where the applicant was in good faith trying to fix a house and perhaps had been red-tagged. We saw several of these in the last five years. And they were going in to fix it up. They needed the extra income from the nightly, you know, from the nightly rental. Obviously, the model is better from the nightly rental if you manage it correctly and customers come. To me, the sticking point was always, and I'll say this for the hundredth time, people are tired here. I know that, I know that, I know that the guys that have been on here, under, you got to be tired of me saying this.
And more.
But yeah, if the neighbors, he's tired of me saying everything. But the, as long as the neighbors were okay with it and, you know, had been vetted with the neighbors, the very proximate neighbors, I would say, okay, if they, if they're saying, come and fix this house, if they're saying, we'd like, we would like you to do that, we would like you to help our neighborhood, I saw a benefit in there that I, you know, it was really enlightening to me because it does work in some cases. And many times they actively supported, they would come and test, you know, give testimony, yeah, we want that person here, that house is going to look great, we need, we need to revitalize the neighborhood. So, and then particularly in cases where you saw somebody coming in, needed that cash flow, they built a business plan, they needed that cash flow to pay off the debt, some of the debt, that cash flow was helping do that with the full intention of them moving into that house once the debt level came down and they could afford to move in. So I feel like we're taking that, we're taking that last instance away, which gives me pause. But I think, and I think that will be an unintended consequence, particularly, you know, young, old, of color, not of color, whoever has that kind of business plan, I don't want to thwart them and take that away from them, but, and particularly again, in cases where everybody in the neighborhood says, yes, we want this. That's not going to happen anymore under this new, under this new plan. So, but I think that for us to kind of press pause on this, I think does make sense as we're seeing hotels come on, we're not, we're not seeing the need for SDRs that perhaps we had, you know, even in the last year, particularly during COVID. But I do support the amendment and let's, let's continue to look at this because it's, it does take up time. It's an interesting study, interesting logic process on how these work. And I appreciate all the work you and your staff have done Clint and kind of getting this up to speed. So thanks.
Thank you.
Clint, I have a couple of questions for, and you might not have the, these numbers on you right now, but do you know how many STR type twos we currently have in R2 districts?
Not off the top of my head. It's probably in the 20 to 30 range.
Okay. My question would be if R2 is primarily a duplex and small single-style family residence, why we're keeping STR type twos by right in the R2 zone?
Well, that, I mean, the, originally when the ordinance was done with the 2017, they were by right with no restrictions. And then when we did the update in 2019, we added the buffer because you do have a lot of the R2 areas where, that are single-family neighborhoods and, you know, more of that character. You know, that, I mean, that is something we could look at, but the idea is because it is more of a mixed-use district where you could have different types of housing that the SDRs fit more into that zoning district. But again, the buffer would still apply, so you won't have a concentration of them in the R2 that you potentially could in some of the heavier mixed-use districts like the O's. So the 500-foot buffer, so it's kind of a compromise between the two, you know, it will still allow them, but it still offer has that buffer that you don't see in the other districts.
Okay. I think hearing that context is helpful. I think my position would be to consider including STR type twos in this ordinance of putting a pause on this, just because it's still within the housing stock challenge or consider putting a cap on the number of STR type twos that we're going to allow in an R2 district.
Councilmember Palmer, we're not posted for that and so that could not be considered today.
Okay. City Attorney Ritchie, how might we consider that at a future point?
It would have to go back through the whole zoning process, including to the Plan Commission. And so, and so it would have to start in that process through Clint presenting it to Plan Commission, a work session, presenting it to them and then making a recommendation or not making a recommendation to y'all.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey Clint, also thank you so much for the presentation and like Councilmember Holmes said, I appreciate your tenacity and your work that you've done with this because I know that it has not been an easy process, but it's been a very tedious one. So I do appreciate your patience and your cooperation as we move through this process and really trying to look to see what's in the best for, the best interest for our community in our city right now. Few points of clarification, especially for those that might be watching us on TV or online. The first three types of SDRs that will not be impacted, bed and breakfast in, bed and breakfast, homestay and STR ones, all of those, the common factor is that the owner is on the premises, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So we're not talking about any impact with those three types of SDRs?
That's correct. No changes with those.
Correct. And then as far as the STR twos and STR threes, which are on the agenda for today, which consist of approximately 80% or close to 80% of the SDRs that we have in our city, those that are in operation today can still operate. They're being grandfathered in, correct?
Correct.
And so they're even able to, if, I know as with any permitting process, they have to reapply on a maybe biannual basis or if I'm not mistaken, and so they'll still have the ability to reapply for their license if they choose to do so.
That's right. The SDR license are for a period of two years and as long as they're renewing those license and in good standing, then they can continue.
What about the ones that are in, or let me ask this, do we have any in the pipeline right now that could be impacted by this decision?
So any, any applications that are, have already been submitted or submitted before this ordinance goes into effect will, will be able to come through the process.
They will be able to come. And do you have an idea of how many that it consists of?
So we had, I believe we had two or three that will be coming to the council in July and then, you know, and then, and then there's a, so that, so you'll have some in July and then potentially some in August if we get new applications before the effective date of this ordinance.
And the effective date of the ordinance would be?
We're anticipating June 15.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, for those that, once again, are watching on TV, and I know the abbreviation that we use sometimes are confusing with zoning, even as a council member, sometimes they're confusing. And so I appreciate you explaining that. You know, I just, for me, I think I am grateful that we're at this point where we are reevaluating As with, I'm sure many of my council members, you know, I am a proponent of making sure that our neighborhoods where parents are raising their children, where families are with, where kids, where neighborhoods are, we want to preserve and keep that. I think it's very important even to the development as we begin to develop more in the core of our city, that it's imperative that we keep those neighborhoods intact. And so I'm grateful that we're at this point. By no means am I opposed to SDRs in our city at all. Considering where we are right now with our housing and the shortage of, not even just affordable housing, but housing in general that we have in our city, I think it's very wise for us to put a pause on STR twos and threes, which consist of the majority of our short-term rentals here in our city, as we begin to really come up with the strategy or a plan of how we will address this housing shortage in our city. We're not even talking yet about access to affordable housing. This is just a housing shortage that we have. And so because of that, and as I think of even the district that I represent, and I know that there might be some SDRs in District Two that maybe the community didn't show up to show opposition to it, but there's a lot of factors that play into that, maybe out of fear of coming to a governmental entity and speaking or things of that, or just the language barrier could be another one. So because of those things, I'm, I'm in favor of this recommendation from staff and so for that I will be supporting this public hearing. Thank you.
Clint, I'll join the chorus of praise for your work on this and your team in coming up with this proposal. I think this is a good balance for the changed conditions since this original short-term rental ordinance was adopted. And I know that that, for the time, was a, was a great compromise. Waco is a wonderful city to visit and stay. We have all kinds of amazing attractions and we've become the focus, both nationally and internationally, of a lot of travelers recently. And we here on the council all are excited about that and want that to continue. So this in no means is an attempt to stifle that. We're just excited about all of the hotels that have come online recently that can accommodate these guests. And with the changes in the housing market, as my fellow council members have identified, I just think now is the time to reevaluate and I think you've done a good job of balancing that with this proposal. I'm content with this, whether it's a short-term pause or whether this is the next five years of a regime for our short-term rental. So I want to thank you for that and I want to be sensitive to that we are with this, prioritizing our long-term residents here with this change, that we can make the most available housing stock available to those seeking homes and the many folks who are coming now from out of town and out of county, looking to make, looking to make Waco their permanent home as our great success in economic development is really taking root. So thank you Clint, thank you city management. I think this is a great solution.
The beautiful thing in these conversations is there is not much left to say. So I won't belabor the point. Thank you Clint for the work that you've done. I appreciate the fact that we've made very clear that those who have already received their permits will be legacy to end and their life, their, their activities will not change. But I also appreciate the fact that, you know, as we, my three minutes are not.
Apologies, that was my fault.
That as we move forward, knowing that these documents are living, you know, and, and they are not meant to be memorials of anything, these are living documents. And so our, as our city grows and evolves, as do our ordinances. So I appreciate you because I know you all have done just, long-suffering is my favorite word, the work and research of other cities and communities and how they do. We are but Waco and so we have to take what we see in, in other communities and see their, their wins and their losses and evaluate how that will affect our community and our citizens. And I think that we've done so effectively in this. We're in this for the long haul and so we, we make time and make place for our citizens as well as our visitors. But I think the priority is that as we do that, we need to do that with the longstanding plan and, and goals for our city first. So I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate those efforts of city management staff, everybody who's participated in the unending tireless work of finding a way to get to center.
Agreed. Dylan, before you go, let me say this, Holmes, one more thing. The, so the STR ones, you have them by right virtually everywhere, except they still have to get the special permit in a residential district, even if an owner is on site.
That's correct.
Okay. So, okay, I like that. Sounds good. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yep. Agreeing with Michael, Councilmember, Hector, you can set your timer if you want to for me.
I'm sorry.
Councilmembers, no, no, no. I, I feel that tension that was referenced, I think that on one side of the coin, we have this, these supply, housing supply concerns here in Waco and this desire to protect those residents of Waco. We have this idea of an expectation of residential use and residential zoning and then also a real, a very real need of streamlining our city processes. Clint, am I right that we're the only city in Texas that has this process of bringing this many short-term rentals or bringing short-term rentals before city council?
That's my understanding, yes.
So I think, let's like say, like, we're, we're really have tried to work with people on this, but I think that there is a real need for, to protect taxpayer resources, which is staff time, to try to streamline this process as well. And then on the other side, there's that tension of individual property rights, which I hold to a high esteem. And this incredible need, probably my highest concern on this other side of the scale is this incredible need for rehabilitating housing stock that's in desperate need of rehabilitation and recognizing that oftentimes the only way it makes financial sense for some people to invest in the homes in the way that we want them to is because of the returns that would come from short-term rentals, as Jim so eloquently mentioned. I think about the Morrow House and a very historic home in Waco that was literally days before demolition. And the only way that that would have ever been restored was through the utilization of a short-term rental. And you better believe the neighbors around there wanted that to be done for the sake of the historic preservation of that house. So there's tension here. I think that we've struck the right balance. For me, you know, the, the hotels that have come online has been referenced, but for me personally, I think it's more of just, there's other things that I referenced, the housing supply and the city process. I think there's going to be, there's many zones, zoning categories that are still available for short-term use. And my, I guess my question for you Clint, or my request for you would be to continue to collect data as, in the days ahead, to really be able be to continue to collect data as, in the days ahead, to really be able, we have a housing study coming out this fall, and I think that as a part of that, my hope is that we will have some data that we collect to really evaluate the actual impact that our short-term rentals are to the housing supply. We know that there's a housing shortage in Waco. I don't know how much of it is driven by short-term rentals. Is it a drop in the bucket, or is it a tidal wave? I think that really having clear data that can help navigate this council to make sure we continue to hit that right balance is going to be important, and I think that we do need, you know, as we have this comprehensive housing strategy this fall, short-term rentals can be a part of that. My hope is that historical preservation can be an element of that, and I think that there's other ways to rehabilitate housing stock in our communities. There's other vehicles for that. It doesn't have to be just short-term rentals, but that might be one of the strategies that we choose to implement in some parts of our community, and as we have this housing study come out this fall, I think that these are some of the things that I would like tried-and-true strategies based on data for us to be able to evaluate at that time, and I think Council Member Bearfield said it well, that this is a living document, and we'll continue to evaluate it. So that'd be my request of staff, see if we can do that. And then, the last request of staff that I would have also is to really try to communicate this. Hector said it's hard to, for a council member to navigate all this. It feels like I'm in a law school exam, like, are short-term rental one, two, three, and all of the, I mean, as you're, it feels like you're being quizzed or something right now by having to answer these questions, and so there is a bit of confusion too. I think we're hitting the right balance, and I think that, you know, these categories are right, and we've done it well, to really try to strike the right balance, so it's very commendable, but trying to ensure that the public, and particularly those in the short-term rental industry, or in the real estate industry, have clarity of what this actually is is going to be helpful, because I think, you know, I got some calls last night with folks under, an impression that we're putting a outright ban of short-term rentals altogether, and that's clearly not the case here. So just, just a continued call for proactive communication with our constituents. Any other questions for staff on this presentation?
I like where you're going with the making clear the information. I mean, you might want to get your YouTube game together.
Your graphic team. That's great. Thanks, Clint. And with that, we will move to the business session, and we will start off with Public Hearing 2021-321.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, this is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the following subdivision plat. Final plat and construction plans of the Hunter's Creek addition. By a vote of nine-zero, the Plan Commission recommended that the subdivision plat and construction plans be approved.
Are there any questions for staff? Having none, we will open a public hearing. Did anyone register to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Jacob Bell said he'd be available if you had questions. He's on the line, but again, only if you have questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bell? If none, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the final plat and construction plans of the Hunter's Creek addition. Second.
Any discussion? Please pull the council.
Let me get to that screen, I'm so sorry. Holmes?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Porterood?
Yes.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Sabida?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes, that motion carries, and we'll move on to Public Hearing 2021-322.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending various sections in Chapter 28 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waco, Texas, to remove short-term rental type two and short-term rental type three from the special use sections of the zoning districts, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with providing a severability clause, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for penalties, and finding and determining the meaning of which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law. The proposed ordinance change will remove short-term rental type two from the special use sections in RE, R1A, R1B, and R1C zoning districts, and the type twos from R3A, R3B, R3C, R3D, R3E, O2, O3, and C1 zoning districts. By a vote of six to three, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the ordinance change.
Any questions for staff? We will open a public hearing. Did anyone register to speak on this item?
Yes, sir. We have some individuals who have registered to speak and have submitted comments. I'll begin with those that are for or in support of this item, and then I'll work towards the ones that are against the item. The first comment that I received was from Millet Hopping. She states, just for comment, "With the need for affordable housing in our community, there should be a limit to short-term rentals for a variety of reasons. This is just not helping either rental stock, community members, and families find affordable housing stock, but in the long term impedes affordable permanent housing options. For those who wish to stay in Waco because they are already volunteer, they already work, volunteer, go to school, open businesses, et cetera here, every action has a trickle-down effect that at some point raising property taxes does not provide a solution." And that was Millet Hopping, President and CEO of the Waco Housing Authority. The next comment submitted was from a Mr. Paul, was the name he provided. Subject is, "Finally, you are looking out for long-term residents too. It's refreshing for a change. Fully support ban short-term rent, also prevent rocketeering in the real estate market by some law. Real estate agencies got so spoiled by the marketing shortage that they are laughing at local residents' budget trying to buy home compared to out-of-state cash buyers. Support by some law, first-time home buyers over speculators. Inside deals and start to print 3D homes ASAP in my dozen units, three RD of the price to sell people by attracting builders. There is not one single condo, townhome, or studio for sale with the whole city, no section, or variety, or choice. Severe shortage of all type, not everyone wants to buy, overpriced three, two standard homes, only big families, and absolute definitely not for the 125K for 125-year-old home that barely can stand straight by the time you pay off mortgage on them, they will collapse on you. Not sooner, so they cannot build any equity in what you could transfer. Time to pay as much attention to the subject as much attention was paid to tourists only in the past decade and a half. Was thinking to leave the city because did not see hope for homeownership, but the right type of talk has finally begun, which suddenly is promising. You can feel ultimately home at any place in your home. You can feel ultimately at home at any place in your home. You did everything for the city tourism. It's time to do everything for first-time home buyers." The next comment was from Jeanette Bell. "The Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association is in favor of the following proposed short-term rental changes. Type two, short-term rentals would no longer be allowed in parts of zone RE, R1A, R1B, R1C. Type three, short-term rentals will no longer be allowed in R3A, R3B, R3C, R3D, R3E, O2, O3, and C1. We are already experiencing housing crisis because the housing supply does not meet the housing demand. We need more affordable subsidized workforce and transitional housing in Waco and Clenning County to accommodate the vested residents and the influx of new residents. Your acknowledgement of these proposed changes will greatly be, will be greatly appreciated. Best regards, Jeanette Bell." The next was from Mr. Sammy Smith. "He did not submit a comment. He did call and leave a message for staff to be shared, and he stated, 'We support the stricter regulations bringing forth today.'" Next comment was from a Mary Lynn Klingman. She sent an email request, and this was addressed to the City Council. "We just read in the Tribune Herald this morning about the City Council's special meeting to vote, 'Limit short-term rental property in residential neighborhoods. We assume this meeting is today, though no date was given in the article. We hope that you support this proposal to ban short-term rentals in residential zone neighborhoods. We appreciate your support. Your short-term rental buyers requested permits in the Lake Arrow neighborhood around Lake Arrowhead a couple of years ago, and the neighborhood opposed them at both zoning committee and city council meetings. You listed to the residents around those properties and voted to oppose the rental applications. You could see how the city council time was taken up by these applications. In fact, more than half of the attendees at one of the council meetings we went to were neighborhood residents opposing the rental, and we all left meeting because the application was withdrawn. It clearly was a disruptive use of council time. Mainly, we believe short-term rentals disrupt the integrity of the residential neighborhood because of the emphasis of ownership is on profit rather than on long-term investment, involvement in a residential community. Surely, this is a complicated issue for the council to vote, but we appreciate your thoughtful interest in giving priority to the residential aspect of residential neighborhoods. Thank you, Barry and Mary Lynn Klingman." And I have to slow down because I just wanted to help the translator, so excuse me. Okay, next on our list, Mr. Travis Balcom had submitted a comment, but he has withdrawn and says that he is just going to be watching at this time. The next individual who registered to speak is Mr. Ricky Allen, and he is on the line. I will move him over so that he has his three minutes. Mr. Allen, are you on the line? I think I hear you. There you are.
Yeah, hello?
Mr. Allen, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff. My name is Rick Allen. I live at 2211 Callcord, Waco, Texas. My wife and I owned Callcord House Bed and Breakfast for 24 years, so this is not a new issue for us. What is a new issue as of 2017, when no Bed and Breakfast owners were consulted for the new city staff policies, was the issue of hospitality versus accommodations. At that point, because of pressure from outside forces, out-of-town money, and an increase in tourism as a result of an HGTV television show, the city felt cornered into opening up short-stay rentals largely owned by people who did not live in the community, who, as someone pointed out in their previous statements, they were looking at profit, not long-term sustainability. So, I'd like the council to really consider what they want for the City of Waco. Do they want some people to make profit off the City of Waco? I call that milking the cow. Or do they want people to come here and become Wacoans and invest in the city, invest in their time, and fall in love with Waco, as many of you have? Because I look around the council meeting and realize there are very few people who were born and raised in Waco on the council today. There were some things I'd like to historically point out. The first policies for short-term stay, and we used to call them Bed and Breakfast, was in 1996, so Josh, you can go back and look those up. They were completely redone in 2017, again without any input from people who had been in the business for over 20 years. What we see today is this abundance of short-term stays that y'all are saying are going to be grandfathered in, which really, that's not true. They're going to be grandfathered in today, but whenever their permit, their special permit is up, they can be grandfathered out, because the neighborhoods can make a decision not to have them there anymore. Pam and I had to do this several times with our Bed and Breakfast, and because we did it for 24 years, you can see that our neighbors saw us as good neighbors. I would like to say that I would like to have a moratorium now on any new short-term The people, 121 homes that are there being rented out without property owners on site by special permit, I'd like to see a complete ban on that kind of product, and I'd like to see the people that currently are renting out their homes...
I think your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Doing a little multitasking. Okay, the next speaker that registered against this item was Kristin Heilich. Her comment is, "In regards to limiting short-term rentals in residential areas to only those where the owners are present on the property, I feel like this would be determined to our communities and those wishing to travel to the city. It is my understanding that there are already limits on how many short-term rentals can be located in a specific area, and I feel like the type of restriction is sufficient to make sure that certain areas are not being filled with too many short-term rentals, and hurting the availability of housing. There are multiple reasons for this current housing shortage, but I do not believe the short-term rentals are a large contributing factor. According to the Waco Tribune article about the hearing, this amendment would currently impact only 90 properties, which is not having a material impact on the availability of housing. We have a few nearby Airbnb short-term rentals in our neighborhood, and I appreciate them because the owners are investing in the properties and take good care of them." And, oh boy, investing in their properties and taking good care of them, and that can only be a boon to our neighborhood. I know there are more hotels being built in the Waco area, but I do not believe that means we are no longer needing short-term rentals. Personally, my husband and I prefer to stay in Airbnbs, especially right now during the pandemic, because it allows for a convenient place to stay with less contact with other people. Also, as a family of five, including three young children, a short-term rental is a better solution for traveling and dealing with different bedtimes than a traditional hotel room. All that to say, there is definitely people who would prefer to stay at a short-term rental, and those, and these properties can be helpful complement to the traditional hotel industry even once hotel capacity is increased. Thank you for your time and consideration." The next individual on the list is Kimberly Galvan, and I believe she is on the line. She is, I'm going to promote her now. Ms. Galvan, you are on the line. Are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. You're able to unmute your phone, or unmute and turn on your camera, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Awesome. Thank you again. My name is Kim Galvan. I am the current president of the Waco Association of Realtors. Mayor Meek and council members, we appreciate your comments and your insight into this particular matter. We did want to simply make a statement today to say that the Texas Realtors and Waco Association Realtors believes that property owners are well within their right to conduct short-term rentals, especially if the property is a person's homestead. Surveys do show that short-term rentals are popular with visitors, and they are a valid economic tool for property owners and for local communities. Additionally, surveys have historically shown no negative impact on property values surrounding property owners or acceptable community standards. The Texas Realtors and Waco Association of Realtors does support reasonable short-term rental registration and hearing policy with input from surrounding neighbors. We would also appreciate you evaluating the housing study that is going to be conducted and considering those results in any future changes to this or any future ordinances. We appreciate your service, and we thank you for your time today.
The next comment submitted was Mr. Kyle Early. He submitted an email that reads, "I'd like to submit my comments to be heard in opposition to the ordinance of short-term rentals. Not allowing short-term rentals would hurt many in the Waco area. Short-term rentals allow families in need of a place between buying and selling their homes an option. In the time I have operated a home as a short-term rental, I have multiple families reach out to me needing a place for two to three months. These families would not be able to afford the cost of a hotel for that time period. They are people coming to Waco to look for a home. They are people who have sold their home while looking for a rent house. They are people coming to Waco to see if the town fits their needs. As a traveler, short-term rentals for families are a way to cut costs on travel expenses. Staying in a hotel with a people makes travel for some too expensive. The ability to have everyone stay under one roof, cook meals together, and be able to relax are all reasons people travel to areas. As an operator of a short-term rental, my needs would not be met by allowing a long-term tenant to reside there. Short-term rentals, tenants also allow me to be in the house frequently. I am able to address issues with the home that a normal tenant may not care about. Being able to upkeep a property on a regular basis helps the appeal of the neighborhood. It keeps the house from being run down by a bad tenant. I can guarantee in the upkeep of my short-term rental makes the property the best-looking property in the area. I am sure that this is the issue for most cases in the city. To take that away from the city could potentially bring property, down property values in those neighborhoods. In all, not allowing a short-term rental would be, put a negative effect on travel, home purchasing, property values, and the income on hundreds of people currently operating in... their properties as such." I hope you take into consideration the thousands of owners are using, thousands of people a decision like this, like hurt and not help. Property in Waco is not limited because owners are using them as short-term rentals. Properties in Waco are limited because no one can afford to sell their homes for the over-inflated amounts, and then find a place to stay for the same place that currently reside. People from all over the nation that make more due to their cost of living of where they reside have an unfair advantage in home buying, and are coming to Texas in large amounts. This creating, this is creating a shortage on homes, not short-term rentals. Thank you for your time, Kyle Early. Next comment that we received, just want to confirm he's not on the line, is John Canning. "I would like to start by saying that I do not believe it is appropriate to restrict property rights to fix housing affordability and availability issues. Long-term rental versus short-term rental in residential really is not, is no different. The property owner has the right to maximize the return on their investment. If the property is a nuance, a nuisance to other owners, they, then they should take the appropriate civil action and litigation, litigate a solution. People do not, do not continue down the path of property restrictions laid out by initially San Francisco and California as a whole." Next comment is from Jared Clark. "I oppose the short-term rental units that take away housing stock for existing residents of City of Waco. As a result, the middle-income residence has to rent low-income units, taking away opportunities from low-income residents. We have assortments of affordable housing units, which in turn does not allow the most vulnerable the opportunity to transition out of the homeless shelters and motels," sincerely, Jared Clark. And it looks like that was not against, it was in support. Mayor and council, those are all the speakers and comments that we have received.
Thank you, Esmeralda. We will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the proposed staff ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 70, I'm sorry, Chapter 28 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waco, Texas, to remove short-term rental type II and III from the special use sections of the zoning districts, as gone over by Mr. Peters here on first reading.
Second. Any discussion? I just want to say again, thank you to our staff, who's worked hard for years on this, our planning staff, Jennifer and Judith, on the legal team, and so many others. Y'all have all worked really hard for years now on this, leading up to today, to really work, I believe, to care for our residents and our citizens, and those visiting our city, and really trying to strike the right balance. So I just want to commend staff for really trying to take a balanced approach to this on some pretty difficult and challenging things. So, thank you, staff. Esmeralda, please pull the council.
Yes, sir. Jim Holmes?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Borderwood?
Yes.
Bearfield?
Yes.
Sabida?
Yes.
Meek?
Yes, that motion carries, and we will move on to the hearing of visitors concerning any city business. Esmeralda, are there any registered speakers on the hearing of visitors?
No, sir.
We will not open a hearing of visitors. Are there any requests for scheduling for future agenda items? If not, there being no other future, further business, we will adjourn this meeting at 2:54 PM.